Welcome everyone to the people's house. So glad you're here. This time I'll ask the city clerk to please call the board.
Commissioner Pam Smith-Wright?
Here.
Mayor Tom Watson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Mark Castlin?
Here.
Commissioner Bob Glenn?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. This time, item three is explanation of the vacancy procedure process. We'll turn that over to City Manager Nate Pagan.
Good morning, or excuse me, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. It's been a long day. We're here today to continue the process of filling the vacant Commissioner seat on the Board of Commissioners. State law provides 30 days for the remaining members of the Commission to fill the vacancy. The new Commissioner selected in this process will serve through the rest of this year. A special election will be held in conjunction with the general election in November, in which city voters will elect a candidate to serve for 2024, which is the second year of the two-year term we're considering. The filing deadline for that special election has previously been reported as June 6th. Other than providing for a 30-day window, state law is silent about the process for filling a vacancy. By providing for an open application period and conducting these public interviews of all applicants, we have designed a process that is open, fair, and as objective as possible. We received 30 applications, which frankly is far more than expected. But it is great to see so many of our residents interested in serving our great city that we call home. In fact, we received so many applications that we had to split the interviews over two meetings. 12, excuse me, 18 interviews are scheduled for this evening, and 12 additional interviews are scheduled to begin at 6:00 PM tomorrow. Of those 12 for tomorrow, however, two have withdrawn, so we're down to 10, for a total of 28 inactive consideration. Both today and tomorrow, interviews are open to the public and shared live on the city's Facebook page and YouTube channel. The interviews will consist of four broad questions. You'll be asked to provide an introductory statement to discuss your community involvement, what you think the city's priorities should be, and if you plan to run in the special election for the second year of the term. The order of interviews for today and tomorrow were assigned randomly using an Excel spreadsheet. Up to two minutes will be allotted for your response to each question, and there will be a clock on the screens that resets with each question, allowing everyone to track the time. Both today and tomorrow, we plan a closed session following the interviews so the Board of Commissioners can discuss applicants and your responses while fresh in their minds. Today, the public portion of the meeting will end when the closed session begins. So whenever we stop the open session, that'll be the end of the proceedings today. Tomorrow, however, after the closed session, we will reconvene in open session for the Board of Commissioners to vote to select a Commissioner to fill the vacancy. While the vacancy will be filled tomorrow, it is difficult to predict the time as it will depend on when and how long it takes the consensus to become clear. Those interviewing today are welcome to attend tomorrow in person or free to watch online. If the person selected is in attendance tomorrow, we would swear them in at that time. However, if the person selected is not in attendance, we could schedule a time on Wednesday or as soon as possible to administer the oath of office. So we would proceed based on the potential attendance or non-attendance of the one selected. So Mayor and Commissioners, that's a pretty good overview of the process. Happy to answer any questions or comments, should you have any.
Any questions from the dais? Hearing none. Okay, Ms. Davis, I guess you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, number one to come up for their interview is Jared Revlet.
Oh yeah, you're supposed to sit at that table. We forgot to tell you that.
Do or don't.
I forgot to tell you. Okay, Mr. Revlet, please take two minutes to introduce yourself to the members of the public and the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. First and foremost, just want to say thank you for having us here tonight and going through this process. I know it's not an easy process, not only to select a Commissioner to sit up there with you, but also to replace a friend in Larry Maglinger that served the community so well. My name is Jared Revlet, and I'm once again here trying to represent a new face with fresh ideas for the city of Owensboro. This is my second time putting my name in for the City Commissioner office, and this time it's a little different than it was the first go-around, but still happy to be here. For those of you that may not know, I'm the Public Information Officer for Owensboro Public Schools. That is my day job. And so in that role, I have an experience doing a lot of what you do, working in public meetings, working with a large sample of our community each and every day, working with the Owensboro Police Department on things like school safety and those matters. And every day, I get to see a snapshot of our community in our schools and working with those individuals and their families each and every day.
Thank you. Mark? Commissioner Castlin?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Revlet, would you please describe your involvement and experience in working with the local community issues and organizations?
Absolutely. I'm here because I believe in creating a bright future for our community, and I believe that I represent the next generation of leaders here in Owensboro. And I tried, after I ran for City Commission and wasn't elected, I tried to get involved in as many things in the community as I could so that I could continue to lead by example. And I mentioned earlier my work with Owensboro Public Schools, seeing things every day in our communities such as poverty, safety, dealing with the juvenile crime issues in our community that sometimes is transferred over into our school buildings. I'm also on the board for Girls Incorporated here of Owensboro, Davis County. Every day I get to work with those girls who are, we're building strong, smart, and bold women who are also going to be the next leaders of our community. So getting to hear their experiences, share what they're going through, and work with them to create that next generation in our community. I also work on the board with Bicycle Owensboro, and that role is a little bit twofold. One, we organize a ride every year called the Bluegrass Century that brings tourism and outsiders to our community to visit Owensboro, to experience all that we have to offer, and hopefully build an interest with them. But also, I work as part of a community liaison there with them, trying to work on things like the Bike Walk Survey that trying to work on things like the Bike Walk Survey that some of you actually submitted responses to, working on ways to make our community more accessible, both by walking, by biking, those types of things. Commissioner Glenn has something we're still working on, so I will be following up with you on that. And also, I've been involved with the Chamber Young Professionals Group here for the last several years, and I've been a Chair of several committees, most recently the Community Development Committee as we try to continue to work on the development here in Owensboro that started more than ten, fifteen years ago, and continue that development here today.
Thank you. Commissioner Glenn.
Based on your knowledge of Owensboro's city government, what do you see as the top priorities for the city and for you as a member of the Board of Commissioners?
So, you know, my priorities are still kind of the same as they were when I ran for City Commission several years ago. One, I believe in supporting local and small business and cutting some red tape to make that successful. Owensboro's long had a big chain mentality, you know, guilty of myself, love me some Texas Roadhouse on a Friday night. But I would love to see some small businesses continue to grow here and thrive in our community. I also have a real passion for retaining local talent. I was guilty of this myself. When I graduated high school, I swore I was never coming back. And, you know, about six and a half, or six years ago, I did come back, and it's been great ever since. And I want to make sure that we're keeping the best and brightest here in our community. I have a plan to do that. I'm working some of that with our Chamber Young Professionals Group right now on the community development side of things to try and incorporate a plan for that. I also think there are certainly some issues still to address with safety and security in our community. We've got too many young people in our community getting access to firearms and turning around and committing crimes with those, both in the community and sometimes in our schools, which is not what we want. So that's still a priority for me, and I get to work with OPD and the judges on that as well. And finally, I want to continue to promote economic growth here in Owensboro. I think for the future, for us to thrive, continue to attract people to our community, we have to promote economic development, economic growth, and I want to continue to see Owensboro grow and thrive to what I know it can be.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith-Wright.
If you're selected to fill the vacancy, will you commit to running in the special?
Could you, did you hear any of what I said?
I did, but you can go ahead and say it again for the people on line. It's fine.
If selected to fill the vacancy, will you commit to running in the special election to fill the remainder of the term? That's a yes or no answer.
Yes, and hopefully I draw number one for that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners.
Ms. Davis.
Number two is Deborah Filman.
Hello.
Hi, Deb.
I am Deb Filman. I am a long-term resident of Owensboro. Been in the community about forty years. I'm currently the Development Director at the Bluegrass Music Hall of Fame and Museum. I'm a retired public health director. I was with the Health Department thirty-five years.
Okay, Mr. Castlin, Commissioner Castlin.
Deborah, or Ms. Filman, could you please describe your involvement and experience working with the local community and the issues and organizations that you've worked with?
That's the reason I really didn't elaborate earlier, because this question, I was, as public health director, we were actively involved in, with the citizens of this community on a number of, in a number of areas. A lot of people think that health departments only involved with the low income, which we are, were, were. But it's also businesses, and I think more than ever since COVID, you know what the Health Department, the importance of that, and the Public Health Agency is in our community. Most of the time, public health is really this quiet, I guess, safe, sort of a safety net for the community until something happens, and then you're trained to address that. So thirty-five years in public health, I saw a lot of this community and worked with Healthy Horizons, working with all the other healthcare agencies, and mental health. You know, it wasn't just physical health. So I think those thirty-five years really helped me be prepared for this position. I retired from there in 2017, but then I moved into the arts community. It gave me a whole different look at what the agency's in this community, the arts community's doing, and just as vitally important to what we're doing. But, and then in my personal time, I've been very involved in nonprofits in our community, on boards of nonprofits. I'm a founding member of Impact One Hundred that has given over three million dollars back to this community. I'm currently Alliance Club member. I currently sit on the Housing Authority Board. I'm on the Western Kentucky University Owensboro Campus Advisory Council. I've sat on the Science and History Museum Board. So I'm very actively involved in my church, and I enjoy every bit of that.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith-Wright. Did I skip somebody?
Yes.
Who did I skip?
Based on your knowledge of Owensboro's city government, what do you see as top priorities for the city and for you as a member of the Board of Commissioners?
To me, the top priority as a Commissioner is to work with the other Commissioners as a team to move this community forward with whatever comes to the table. I think as a team, we can, we can address it. Of course, there are a lot of basic human needs that still need to be addressed in this community. I mentioned mental health. There's transportation, there's housing issues. There's a lot of issues, that's safety, that still need to be addressed in this community. And I think as a team, we can do that. There's really nothing that Owensboro can't do once we set our minds to it. There's also, I know you've already been looking at the benefits for city employees. I think that's important because it's one thing to sit here and decide something, but who's going to have to execute that? Are the people on the, with their feet on the ground, you know, our fire professionals, our police, and so forth. So we need to make sure that they have the benefits that they need, and I know that's a difficult thing in a budget time. And then, you know, a vibrant economic development, it's important for us to continue the progression, be a progressive community that we've shown to be.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith-Wright.
If selected to fill the, if selected to fill the vacancy, will you commit to running in the special election?
Yes, I will.
Thank you, Ms. Filman.
Thank you.
And I guess I should tell you that there's a two-minute signal up on the thing, so that'll give, if you don't already know that, then that'll give you some idea. You can talk faster or slower, or ad lib a little bit if you want to. Ms. Davis.
Okay, number three is Rafe Buckner.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners.
Good morning, good afternoon. Been a long.
Long, Nate.
It's been a long day. Please take two minutes to introduce yourself to the members of the public and the Board of Commissioners.
My name is Rafe Buckner. I am currently the Chairperson of the Northwest Neighborhood Alliance. Born and raised in Owensboro. My day job is the owner of a Cut Above Mowing LLC. I've been doing that since 2015. Been doing the Neighborhood Alliance since 2018.
Okay, Commissioner Castlin.
Mr. Buckner, would you please describe your involvement and experience working with the local community issues and organizations?
Yes, sir. Since getting the Alliance back active, it's been a beautiful thing. It's allowed us to touch so many folks in this community, from City Hall to a lot of the leaders of industry in Owensboro. So we've done different fundraisers. We do an Easter program where we feed the community, giveaway bikes. We also do a community garden, Deep Roots Community Garden. We've been doing that for three years now, just promoting healthy living, promoting self-sustainability. I currently serve on the Board for the Parks Department. So through that, I've had connections there with them. We've also done things with City Works. So it's really allowed us to touch several, several folks. It's endless. I could go on and on. Right now, we're currently working with the Art Guild to finish some work at the mural at Kendall Perkins Park. We should have some more images up there in the next month or so. God, we've done gobs of things. We went door-to-door. Some of the folks that are here went with us during COVID. We went door-to-door, signed our folks up to get vaccinated. I've also been on the committee for the Monita Sleet Junior Project, the festival that was at the River Park Center. Worked hand-in-hand with Amy Wosley and that group. I had a phenomenal weekend. Yeah, it's just been, it's been tons and tons of things, man. It's been great, the folks I've been able to connect with through this program, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Glenn.
Based on your knowledge of Owensboro's city government, what do you see as top priorities for the city and for you as a member of the Board of Commissioners?
I think as a city, we've got to do better. You're only as strong as your weakest link, and so we've got some areas in the city that need some attention. And I think with the folks that are on the Board right now, we could get some things done. Of course, job growth is always a thing. I feel like, I think most studies show that the higher your income, the better your life is going to be. And so if we can get better paying jobs in here, get, you know, get folks educated, I think things just will smooth out some. We also have to do a better job engaging our youth. I think some of the things that have been going on could be changed in a lot of ways. I just had a discussion earlier today. It's kind of a deal where you're either going to fund it on the front end or you're going to fund it on the back end. And why not be on the front of some of this stuff? And so I think that's a big part of what I would like to see done. Other than that, I would say infrastructure projects. I'm happy to see that in the Northwest, they're doing some things with the flooding issues. They're currently, they've been working on Fourth Street. They're currently working on Fifth Street. So that's a big deal that I would like to see done, too, is just kind of, kind of improve those things.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith-Wright.
And if selected to fill the vacancy, will you agree or commit to run?
Yes, ma'am. I would.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Ms. Davis.
Okay, number four is Jeremy Cameron.
Thank you, Tim.
Good morning, uh, afternoon, sorry.
It grows on you, doesn't it?
It does, Mayor. I'm telling you.
It's bald.
Don't blame Nate.
Okay, sir, please take two minutes to introduce yourself to the members of the public and the Board of Commissioners.
Absolutely. Born and raised in Owensboro, nineteen seventy-three. Grew up in the best decades in this town, back when Smothers was tiny, and have loved being here to see our city evolve under the guidance of, you know, several administrations and what we're going toward downtown. Lived away for a long time in the U.S. Navy, and then also as a teacher, starting my career in Franklin, living in Bowling Green, which I feel like is one of the best gifts I ever had in a lot of ways. Leaving town, being experienced in different cultures, seeing the way different towns work, being able to kind of compare and contrast, and then coming back as an adult, as a teacher with Davis County Public Schools, and then growing into someone that partnered with the community a lot to create, along with some other folks with DCPS, the Early College Program that we have, and work closely with the KCTCS programs to increase trace programs. I mean, Davis County Public Schools, under our guidance, grew to be the highest dual credit rate and starting down a path to a long-term career under my guidance, along with Manager Rome and a few others. Started about ten years back, and now we have the most dual credit access to anybody in the state. And I feel like that's awesome, and we've had a great demographic, but I'm excited to see how can we catch those that got away from us in the twenty-to-thirty-year-old range? Because there are so many programs that are free educational opportunities, and I feel like with our city, with the amount of job openings we have, the amount of, you know, we have jobs here. But we also see still a huge amount of turnover. So that's something I would work on for sure.
Okay. Where are we?
Number two.
Number two. Commissioner Castlin.
Thank you. Mr. Cameron, would you please describe your involvement and experience in working with the local community issues and organizations?
Yes, sir. I kind of jumped in on that, I think, in number one, and so I'll kind of skip that part of the educational side. I've been an active alumni for the Boys and Girls Club, selected one of their soonest alumni in 2018. Been part of the Hundred Men That Cook and love that program and still give to that program because of what it did for me as a kid, back when it was Cliff Haggins on Frederica. And been a coach there. I've coached all around the community in our kids' programs. Volunteer still with OHS at this point, even as a principal at Owensboro Day Treatment. I'm able to, been able to work across school districts. The principal job at Owensboro Day Treatment is kind of what brought me to this point in seeing exactly what some of these earlier interviews have talked about, and the amount of students we have with gun-related issues, drug-related issues, mental health issues. I would feel like I would be an advocate because of what I've been doing over the last five, six years now with that particular subset of kids that are in the papers a lot. And I get a lot of emails about, you know, missing students, and those are the kids that we're talking about that we need more community programming for to hopefully be more preventative before they get to that point. You can't change, unfortunately, some of the very traumatic experiences that a lot of our kids are experiencing. But I feel like in partnership with the city, the school systems, and other organizations here in town, we could be more intentional about providing some opportunities for our kids, like Bowling Green does in the two-thirty to six o'clock zone, which is kind of a big danger zone for our town. My other involvement's with the Kentucky Association of School Administrators. I'm on their policy council, have worked with their lobbyists, and have worked in the Kentucky Legislature passing law in the last few years.
Commissioner Glenn.
Yes, based on your knowledge of Owensboro's city government, what do you see as the top priorities for the city and for you as a member of the Board of Commissioners?
I feel like the top priorities for me is kind of back to the safety side, working more preventively to help have kids that are, you know, mentored more. I was a big brother at one time in this community, and would like to see programs like that grow and having the men of our community and the women of our community that are models to mentor these young people and kind of grow the job skills that we're talking about. I feel like the city government already does a really good job at partnering with KCTCS system, and we're really blessed with what we have. So how can we continue to grow that and to work with the state legislature like I've been doing in the last, last two years now to kind of partner up and make our community even stronger educationally, especially in the eighteen-to-twenty-four-month program where kids can get to work at an early age? I mean, my nephew was twenty years old when he made his first hundred thousand dollar salary out of KCTCS. Those are available to all of our kids. A lot of times, they just don't have the support to get to those jobs, and that would dramatically change what we have in our community. I feel like I love the riverfront, but I also feel like as an educator of twenty-one years, I can't afford it. I would love to be able to live downtown. Absolutely love it. But a four-hundred-to-five-hundred thousand condo is about all that's affordable. I would love to see increased housing in the, you know, hundred-and-fifty-to-three-hundred thousand dollar range so more citizens can experience, you know, the walking life that the city would provide. And we've created this beautiful jewel downtown. Would be nice to see that active all the time by having kids and families live downtown. I think that would be with the neighborhood revitalizations we've been having kind of over in this direction. When I used to live on Allen Street by Brusha, you see that growing. It'd be neat to see that spread and continue to spread along the river so we can hopefully have the city kind of come in and go from there.
Commissioner Smith-Wright.
If selected to fill the vacancy, would you commit to running in the, in the special election?
So this is weird. I was sitting back there next to my dad, and... I was sitting back there next to my dad and, uh, he went to high school with a couple of y'all, I think.
He's much older.
It's a yes or no answer.
He's not much older. It's not a yes or no answer. It used to be a yes or no answer. Uh, I've got two minutes, so here's my yes or no answer. No, I will not run. I feel like this is very rushed and I feel like I'm a very qualified person to fill in in an interim so it would give democracy a chance to actually happen over the next three months. Um, a special election is great, but whoever you select is gonna have a leg up on anybody else that goes for that seat. Cause you're, you know, it's just, that's the nature of what we have. I feel like from a fair policy, I, I plan to run for city council, but I wanna do it in a regular election when the people can have a bigger voice. Um, you know, I would be a short-term guy. Uh, you know, that's what it comes down to, but I wouldn't be. Uh, at some point, I'm gonna run for state legislature. At some point, I'm gonna run for this council soon, cause I'm coming to the end of my career. But I would love to see the people have a bigger window of time to actually hear from the twenty-seven others that are maybe gonna run for it. Hopefully we won't have twenty-seven candidates in special elections, but, um, I would love to be the guy that fills in, in the interim while the city and the people of the city can actually make a decision.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Davis?
Okay. Number five, Jeff Sanford.
Welcome. Please take two minutes to introduce yourself to the members of the public and the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, I'm very happy to be here tonight. It's, uh, under circumstances, I wish it wasn't, but it is. And, uh, anyway, my name, I've been around for a little bit. My name's Jeff Sanford. Uh, I've served with, uh, most of you here and, uh, I've served quite a bit. Uh, I've got a beautiful family, my wife, Misty, uh, she's a dentist here in town, my son Dylan and my daughter Peyton. Dylan went to Owensboro High School, Peyton went to Owensboro Catholic and, uh, he just graduated from med school, so I'm kinda really proud of him for that. And my daughter-in-law, Claire Ottman Sanford, she graduated also. Um, I've been around the community a long time, coached basketball mainly, uh, at Owensboro Catholic and Owensboro High School and, uh, met a lot of great people through, uh, through coaching, uh, met a lot of great people doing this, this job that you guys do today. It's, I've been, I've been truly blessed, uh, just to be able to meet all the people and create the relationships I've been able to create over all these years. So it's a true, true pleasure to be here and I, hats off to everybody that's in this room tonight, cause this is a, this is a tough thing to do, to sit here and get interviewed in front of everybody and, uh, not everybody's used to this. So it's, it, I, I get it, it's tough, cause when I first started, I was a little nervous and didn't really know what to say, but anyway, uh, good luck to everybody, cause everybody's qualified and they all have unique, uh, things that they, they could bring to the table. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Castle.
Uh, Mr. Sanford, would you please describe your involvement and experience in working with the local community, uh, the issues and organizations you've worked with?
Um, Commissioner Castle and I have, um, I would say probably to start, it would probably start with coaching and working with youth. That's the most important thing to me. That's what touches me most is kids, because at some point, you guys or me that was there at one point, we won't be here and they're our future. So that's one of the most important things to me. Number two, I've been on, I've been blessed to be on so many boards in this community. I, I can't, I can't mention them all, but in, in being able to see how this thing works. And one thing that's so, that's so incredible about Owensboro is in two thousand thirteen, we were, we won the city award out in Denver and people could not...
Momento savage again.
People were really impressed with how many boards that we have here in Owensboro and how many free, uh, free boards and people don't get paid and they were just really, uh, couldn't believe how many, how much participation we have in this community, which is, which is, uh, we're very blessed to have stuff like that. So between that, being a commissioner, uh, being a chairman of different boards, Chamber of Commerce, I, I could keep going, but I've been, uh, I've been able to be a part of so many things. Lately, uh, John Fowler, uh, he and I and some others started this thing called The Hub and we've had some great success with that, where we, 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 we heard about all the stuff, of course, all of us have, going on in the community with kids and violence. So we wanted to do something directly about it and I believe, Mark, I believe you were there for some of it and I think some of you've been to some of the meetings and, uh, it's really actually gaining traction with no government help, all on our own, self-funded, which is very exciting to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Castle, I mean Glenn, sorry.
Uh, based on your knowledge of Owensboro city government, what do you see as the top priorities for the city and for you as a member of the Board of Commissioners?
Safety. Safety's number one. I think while I was here, I think we did a heck of a job with our police department as well as fire department and, and keeping them funded and funded to a degree. And does it need to be more? Probably so. Uh, you know, the best we can do, and I know money only stretches so far, but we have got to support these guys. That's number one. Number two, we all talk about economic, uh, we're all trying to create great jobs and, 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 uh, but the thing that was on my mind before I left here was industrial park. We've got to have somewhere to put people. You know, it's easy to say economic development, but if you don't have anything to sell people or anywhere to put people, that's why the intrinsic knowledge of how all this work is so important. It's just like the drainage stuff we passed, uh, before I left, all the, all the sewage and stuff underneath the, you have to have these things in place plus property before you can even attract a business to this community. That, then you have to have educated workforce. There's so many things that go into this and there's so many little pieces and parts that are moving constantly, that you have to have a good understanding of how all this works. So when you do have that understanding, then you can actually attract something, but we have to have spaces. There's other communities that are targeting businesses and giving away free property and that's just the world we're in. You have to be very, very competitive and if you're not, you're, you're, you're gonna lose out. So that's something I'd like to see is some kind of industrial park.
Commissioner Smith-Wright.
If selected to fill the vacancy, will you commit to running in the special, uh, election to fill the?
Absolutely. I've ran so many times that, yeah, I still have signs. Yes, I would, I would commit to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Davis?
Okay. Number six is Paul Puckett.
Mayor, Commissioners?
Mr. Puckett? Please take two minutes to introduce yourself to the public and the Board of Commissioners.
I'm Paul Puckett. I was born and raised in Owensboro, um, went to senior high, went to Eastern Junior High School and, and University of Kentucky. Uh, went away for, for a while and then moved back in about nineteen seventy-eight. Married, have two children, um, gotta get this right, my math, I think I have, what did I say? I have eight grandchildren and two great-grandchildren. Uh, have been a businessman, a consultant, a banker and a lot of different things. Um, so that's me.
Thank you. Commissioner Castle.
Uh, Mr. Puckett, would you please describe your involvement and experience working with the local community and the issues and organizations?
Thank you, Commissioner. I presently am involved with the West Kentucky Presbyterian as moderator. As moderator, I work with the different churches in, in the Western Kentucky on, um, filling positions and working with the congregations and ministers, uh, in, in that, in that regard. Also, I'm a member of the Owensboro Community, uh, Connections Committee, I should say, and then that, what they do is, uh, we meet, uh, on a monthly basis and talk about issues that, that concern, um, uh, communities that, that maybe they think they're less, less, uh, represented. Also, uh, been involved with the Northwest Neighborhood Alliance and in that regard, we started with, uh, with Rafe Buckner and also Commissioner, um, Castle and Deep Roots Community Gardens. We, we thought that they, they believe and I believe their, in their community, they had, um, a, a food desert, too many convenience stores and not enough good food and at an affordable price.
Commissioner Glenn?
Uh, based on your knowledge of Owensboro city government, what do you see as the top priorities for the city and for you as a member of the Board of Commissioners?
Well, I looked at the, I looked at the mission of the, of the Owensboro, uh, and I, I saw that, that what you had really, um, dovetails with what I'm concerned about. Um, you know, I'm concerned about safety and I think in that, in that I think violence harms us all. Uh, and, and from talking to some neighborhoods who, who, and how they feel about safety, they would like to see the, the, the service from police and from firefighters be more the face that they're familiar with. And I, and I appreciate what you got, what this commission has done lately in changing the requirements for, um, in both, for the firefighters and also the police. Um, I, I also have concerns for safety about renters' rights. I think any of, if, uh, at a certain age, I think there's a large population of people who rent in this, uh, in this, uh, in our vicinity and I think there's, uh, you, you see a wall, I have seen a wide variety of circumstances that those folks, uh, have to endure. Uh, as far as improving services, I think Combest and Cravens Pool should stay open and I think we should continue with, uh, the, uh, improving the, the, um, parks like Moretta Sleet Park that Rafe talked about earlier. As far as economic development, I'd like for us to look more towards the worker's experience. Uh, being a businessman, I know that my first priority is to make profit and, and as a consultant, I've seen too many of our, our businessmen, uh, not all, but concerned about profit only and less about the, the worker's experience. And I would like for us as a team, as someone, or talked earlier, about concentrating on those folks that, that, uh, in the workplace. Uh, finally enhance neighborhood, uh, experiences. I think, um, if we had more, uh, events, that would, more later.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith-Wright?
If you're selected to fill the vacancy, will you commit to running in the special election?
Yes, I would. And I, and I think, uh, as a retired person, I think there, there is some, some advantages that I have. I think that I have the ability to concentrate and focus on, on, um, issues that comes before this, this commission. I think I have wide, wide and broad work experience that would, would, that I, that I hope that would be of, uh, advantage to this commission and I would enjoy working in this environment with, with the team that I see in, in front of me.
Thank you, sir.
That's it?
That's it. It wasn't too painful, was it? Ms. Davis?
Okay. Number seven is DeMarcus Curry.
Evening. Mr. Curry, would you take two minutes to introduce yourself to the members of the public and the Board of Commissioners?
Sure, yes. My name is DeMarcus Curry, born and raised here in Owensboro. Uh, I currently work for U.S. Bank. I also work for Kroger, musician and minister of a few churches here in town. I also do DoorDash and Instacart, so I'm busy working man and also active in the community, very active, so I enjoy doing that as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Castle?
Uh, Mr. Curry, would you please describe your involvement and experience in working with the local community issues and organizations?
So, uh, like I said, I am involved in a lot of organizations here in town. Uh, I am a mentor with the Breaking the Cycle Program. I'm also involved with the local NAACP. Uh, I've participated many times with the Owensboro Black Expo. I'm also a member of the Nonviolent Owensboro Group. Uh, also with, uh, through the job at U.S. Bank, I've volunteered with Junior Achievement. I had fun doing that as well. And I'm also a, a member of the Owensboro Davis County Drug Task Force Team, so. Uh, but the main thing as far as community involvement, I am the founder of the Owensboro Youth Empowerment Summit and that is something huge in our community, which I think so. Uh, if I can just tell you briefly, uh, the recent event I had, uh, back in March, the Teen Job Fair at the library, it was very successful. I was very glad of the happening to have two hundred-plus teams show up wanting, willing to work out. I think people take that very lightly, especially with the things that we have going on in our community. If we focus on how to build up our youth such as that, that can help improve some things as far as not just right now, but also in the future. So, um, involvement in the community is something that we need more people to be aware of, to take advantage of as well, and I think that can help and make other things possible within our community.
Thank you.
Based on your knowledge of Owensboro city government, what do you see as the top priorities for the city and for you as a member of the Board of Commissioners?
So my main focus right now, if I was to be the, uh, one of the city commissioners, is focus on what can we do to improve with our juveniles. Um, one option that I think if I was elected that I would bring forward to the table is I would reopen up the city youth council, give the kids an opportunity to, uh, experience what it's like being at the forefront, letting them be the ones to take over, uh, run it at their levels as far as being in control and, uh, building up the future for them. Also, what I, what I would do is bring up a teen summer program. I think, uh, there is really not much involved as far as within our youth, uh, having a teen program can help advance them, not just on an educational level, but also on a working level as well. They can learn more as far as financial, hands-on, tech, uh, things of that nature. Uh, one of the center issues that I also see happening in our town is what can we do to build up South Frederica Street? Businesses down in that area have, I, I assume, lost a little interest where we have everything developing on fifty-four and other areas. What can we do to make sure that the whole city and not just one part of the city is still here in existence? Also, I have a thought about what can we do, uh, with our college students? So I thought about what can we do as far as with the social workers, building up a program, uh, with the colleges, the universities, have them do some kind of study where they can be the ones having a, um, being a mental health therapist here in town. Mental health is something that is kind of less talked about until something happens. Then we wanna bring up that issue where we have, if we have colleges such as KDC in Brusha, OCTC have a program developing the students within the, that field with mental health. That can also help branch not just that study, but also bring in businesses as well and, you know, help advance that, that topic within itself.
Commissioner Smith-Wright?
If selected to fill the vacancy, will you commit to running in the special election to fill the remainder of the term?
Yes, I would definitely run.
Hey, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Davis?
Okay. Number eight is Jay Valada.
Hello, Jay.
My name is Jay Valada. I'm on this side of the table today, but I wanna be back over with you guys. That's where you come in. Uh, I am still a citizen of Owensboro, even though you might not see me much anymore. Here a couple of years ago, I, uh, had a little career change and, uh, probably for the best, probably one of the best things I've ever done, not only for me, but for my community, because it's given me the opportunity to expand my, um, my opportunity, my visions by traveling to larger cities. Um, I am a large asset manager for Jones Lang LaSalle. I work for an international company. I've traveled all over the country to some of the largest cities and seen some of the challenges that they're faced with and I've seen how they handle those things to some degree. Everywhere I go, I get to work with, uh, with the government, with commissions, whether it be municipal or state, and, um, it gives you a whole different perspective of what you're, what you're looking at and, and some of the things you, you take out of that, you can bring back. Fortunately, I was able to work in the state of Kentucky for a while in the city of Florence, uh, very flourishing community in our northern part of the, of the state and, uh, they have a very dynamic growth pattern, uh, something we need to focus on for here and we'll talk about that in the next segment, so. Um, but, uh, just appreciate the opportunity, unfortunate circumstances to why we are all here and, uh, big loss for the city of Owensboro. a big loss for the city of Owensboro. But I feel that I, I bring a little something different and special, and again, I've been working to get back to that side of the table for a while, so we'll see if we can't get there.
Thank you. Commissioner Castlin?
Mr. Valada, would you please describe your involvement and/or experience in working with local community issues and organizations?
Absolutely. Glad to do. Chamber is one of my, my passions. I've done everything within the Chamber of Owensboro, from young professionals all the way up to sitting on the Chamber Board during my tenure as, as a commissioner, and it's an enriching experience seeing kind of the front door along, along with that, and kind of a sidestep to that was my involvement with the Kentucky Realtor Association, and also the Owensboro, Greater Owensboro Realtor Association here locally. Bringing, you're kind of the front door, the first face people see when they come to your community, so you get a lot of opportunities to see folks that can actually, more or less, give you better ideas of, of things that they've seen in other areas, expand your horizons a bit. I've also worked on the Code Enforcement Board for a short period of time, the Planning Commission, which gave me a great deal of opportunity to see how our inner workings work, and we, we have work in every, every direction to do on some of those areas, but we do a great job here in the city of Owensboro. People don't realize whenever you go outside the doors and outside the gates, there's, there's a lot of opportunity here that people just don't understand and the value, and put any value on that. So, I've also been involved with Friday After Five, the JA Board, Crossroads, and, and my board involvements have obviously cut back since I've been traveling for a couple of years, but I look forward to getting engaged again with a lot of the community and helping with the needs in this community to move things forward, and hopefully I can break some of my ideas to those folks to help them, you know, be more essential to the community.
Commissioner Glenn?
Based on your knowledge of Owensboro City Government, what do you see as the top priorities for the city and for you as a member of the Board of Commissioners?
Well, I mean, you guys do a great job, and I realize that you're working within constraints, as we all do. One of the biggest things is safety, as we've heard many times, and a lot of that's just supporting our first responders. Affordable housing programs are a big part of that as well, and it's hard to get affordable housing in an urban community, but we are working towards that, and there are ways to do that, backfilling vacant spaces. I have some best use of city assets, meaning, you know, we, we own real estate and property. We've got to figure out what the best use is for those and how we can enhance the value of those to make sure we're getting the best dollars that we can. That's where I've got a lot of experience. Over the past couple of years, I've, I've had a real intricate passion and, and basically no choice but to learn how to manipulate and manage and build budgets. So, I've become, if you ever are weak in an area, I always found that I, I focused on that to try to make sure. I didn't have a great understanding of that the last time I was on commission. It was, it was a foreign thing to me. I, I knew about budgets, but I didn't know a budget of that level. I'm a little more experienced with that now, so I feel like I can bring something to the table with that. Of course, in a fiscally responsible manner, you know, that's the thing. I always want to make sure everyone understands, we're working for our constituents and our, the citizens of this community. So, we got to make sure that we, you know, protect everybody. It's not about "I," it's about us, us as we collaborate as a team to move things forward. Infrastructure's a big deal in economic development. Realize that, you know, I've always run on that in the past. Every campaign I've ever done's been based on infrastructure. I'm, I'm facing it now, air transportation. We, we struggle with that here. I have to travel outside of our city to catch a plane to wherever I'm going, and it's a challenge. I got to drive an hour, two hours to get to an airport, and it's, it's, there's got to be a better way. I think we're working on that, we're just not there yet. I want to be a part of that, too. Of course, diversity and equality and inclusion, it's a big buzzword for everybody. We have, we're working on it, but we're not there yet. We've got some work to do.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith-Wright?
If selected to fill the vacancy, will you commit to running in a special election to fill the remainder of the term?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
Okay, number nine is Nikki Walker.
Please take two minutes to introduce yourself to the members of the public and the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you very much for this opportunity this evening. I appreciate your time and attention. I do want to express my condolences to you all this evening. I know that Mr. Magalena was a wonderful public servant to the community, and he's greatly missed in this community. My name is Nikki Walker. I have grown up in Owensboro, Kentucky. I also have the unique advantage, as many of our other candidates here, to have moved away from the city. I moved back about 12 years ago, and what I thought was with my tail between my legs, because I did not want to come back to Owensboro for any reason, but it's been one of the best and greatest experiences of my life. I have been able to fulfill my education, and I've been able to continue my education and move forward with different positions. I worked for my family optometric practice for 12 years and managed their business, and now I am a professor for Brusher University. Teaching is not something, full-time academics is not something that I thought that I wanted, but it's been a wonderful and rewarding experience for me. I have a young daughter, and my husband and I have been married for, gosh, don't tell him I stumble on this, five years, and, you know, being in Owensboro has been a very wonderful and rewarding experience for me so far.
Thank you. Commissioner Castlin?
Thank you. Ms. Walker, would you please describe your involvement and experience in working with the local community and issues and organizations?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to. Community involvement is kind of in my DNA. It's been taught to me at a very young age that you are community-involved, and since I moved back to Owensboro, I've had many wonderful opportunities to be involved in the community. I am in the Owensboro Lions Club. I am currently on, which I served on their board. I am currently on the Board of Girls, Inc. I've been on the Board of the Neblet Center. I have, along with Mr. Curry, have participated in the programs that he had at the library for the student involvement. I actually have created a program and a lecture series on resume building and how to obtain the best job for yourself, and I've done that and presented that at the libraries. I've also, I'm heavily involved with the Patino Shelter and the St. Benedict's, presenting those programs once a month. I've been with United Way, I've been with Crossroads, talking about resume building. Job enrichment is kind of my thing.
Commissioner Glenn?
So, based on your knowledge of Owensboro City Government, what do you see as the top priorities for the city and for you as a member of the Board of Commissioners?
Thank you. Like many others that have spoken this evening, of course, safety is a top priority for everyone. However, I feel that the channel to get to safety is an educated workforce, and not just a four-year degree. Bachelor's degrees are not necessarily for everyone, but trade schools and education that could provide greater job opportunities for our community, which would then lead to greater economic advancement and growth in our, in our community. We all see the commercial property in Owensboro. There's so much commercial property that has opportunity for businesses. We just don't have the educated workforce to do that, and it's not necessarily the pathway through a four-year degree. There is other opportunities for education in our community. Also, I feel like there's so many wonderful resources here in our community, and people may not necessarily know that. So, access to resources and, and education and knowledge of our resources for the youth and the elderly here in our community is a top priority that I think that would be beneficial for everyone in the community. When you have a healthy environment, healthy community, and an educated community, you have a better community.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith-Wright?
If selected to fill the vacancy, will you commit to running in the special election?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis?
Okay, number 10 is David Fleishman.
Evening.
I think it's evening.
Is it? Yeah.
Please take two minutes to introduce yourself to the members of the public and the Board of Commissioners, please.
My name is David Fleishman. I'm a lifetime, longtime member of Davis County and Owensboro, born and raised here. I am currently retired. I'm retired out of the IT field, out of several different local companies. I've kind of active in the community, but I'm not on a whole lot of boards or anything like that. I am a proponent of Owensboro. I like to give it a boost whenever I can, and that's pretty much me.
Thank you. Commissioner Castlin?
Yes, Mr. Fleishman, could you please describe your involvement and/or experience in working with local community issues and organizations?
I don't belong to very many civil, civic organizations, but what I have had in the past is I was a person that ran a free tax site for nine years that the Hager Foundation started up in this town, and that was a rewarding experience, and I met a, a wide variety of, of citizens of this community, and I also saw the need that is out there for something to help people improve their lives, and this was one of them. I'm a, I've met the public a lot of times through being a participant at the barbecue festival. I've met people from all over the world, always talking Owensboro up really nice. I'm a participant in Bicycle Owensboro, like Mr. Revell was talking about, so meet a lot of people that way, but I'm not on a lot of boards.
Commissioner Glenn?
So, based on your knowledge of Owensboro City Government, what do you see as the top priorities for the city and for you as a member of the Board of Commissioners?
I'd like to see the commission continue on with their neighborhood projects. I think that's a, a good, a good thing. It's helping everybody improve their lives, improve their communities. When it comes to safety in the local community, one of the things I'm really concerned about is I hope we can stay in front of any possible gun violence, because I, I don't like what I see in surrounding communities and states, and I think that's, could be a problem here. Infrastructure will always be an issue. We still have to continue to, to get behind that. I'd also like to see the educational system continue on so that we can find a way to get a very good educated workforce, and at the same time with that educated workforce, we need to have the jobs available so we can keep them here in Owensboro. I think we have a lot of nice things going for us. I mean, I've boosted Owensboro a lot when people come from out of town. I take them downtown and show them around and explain to them how it was done and, and the benefits of it, and they're always willing to go back to their local communities and say, "Wow, look what they did and what we could possibly do." So, that's about it.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith-Wright?
Yes, Mr. Fleishman, if you're selected to fill the vacancy, will you commit to running in a special election?
At this time, no.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Ms. Davis?
Okay, number 11 is Gregory Bays.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Please take two minutes to introduce yourself to the members of the public and the Board of Commissioners, please.
I'm Dr. Gregory Bays, long-term resident of Owensboro. My bachelor's is in religion, my master's is in marriage and family therapy, and my doctorate is in theology and apologetics. I served 20 years in the Air Force as a chaplain and have planted and pastored four churches in my tenure as a minister, and have raised my children here. I have four adult children and five grandchildren, and I've always been involved in my community. I even brought a foreigner with me from the military. My wife's German. That can be a problem sometimes. And, but she enjoys Owensboro. She's very active in Owensboro herself, and I've tried my best to always be involved outside of my church, because I felt like more ministry needed to go on outside the four walls of a church, and I should not be just looked at as a preacher, that there was so much more that I could offer, and which I did.
Thank you. Commissioner Castlin?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Bays, could you please describe your involvement and/or experience in working with local community issues and organizations?
Sure. One of those, I served on the Veterans Council with Commissioner Smith-Wright over here for a while. Also, served on Audubon Area's Board of Directors for 12 years, serving twice as Board Chairman. Was instrumental in working with the, the grant team, because I'm a certified grant specialist, and developed the grant to expand grits from just our seven counties to now, for many years, it's served 32 counties, and expanded its services quite a bit. Enjoyed working with them and, and learned quite a bit, learning from them. I assisted folks in Ohio County, get a Habitat for Humanities set up, because they wanted one, and Virginia was very helpful to help me do that. And besides that locally, I also served, I was appointed by the governor to serve on the Agencies for Substance Abuse Policy Board, and met in Frankfurt quite often, and worked with many of the different agencies, the State Medical Director, the Alcohol, Tobacco and Firearms folks, and came to this community and thought, "I'm going to bring to Owensboro what I can to help Owensboro." So, I was instrumental in helping Dave Osborne start his substance abuse treatment program at the jail, and then I worked with Roger Stacy in starting up the Community Solutions for Substance Abuse here in Owensboro, and served as their interim director until they hired a director to run the agency, and did many different projects related to that.
Commissioner Glenn?
Yes. Based on your knowledge of Owensboro City Government, what do you see as the top priorities for the city and for you as a member of the Board of Commissioners?
There is most definitely a safety issue. I served for a while as chairman of the Homeless Council of the Ohio Valley, and was followed by Harry Pettigo, and he's doing an awesome job. But during my time there, early on, it was easy for me to take an individual who was on disability, drawing only $735 a month, and I could find them an apartment they could afford for $200, $230, and that worked out great. Now, those same people still draw just $735, and the same apartments that they could have rented back then are now $700, $800, and $900. So, we, we have a potential for a homeless issue growing out of hand and causing trouble, because many of them have substance abuse issues, they get in trouble with the law, and cause our city great pain because of their situation, and getting them in good, positive housing would be the best thing for them. Also, our children. We keep losing our children to the rest of the world. We need to work really hard to make sure that our college graduates here in Owensboro stay in Owensboro, give them incentive to stay here. Plus, I've seen and heard about programs in high schools where companies are coming together, working with these high schools, and they're putting these children through a internship kind of like thing, and when they're, when they graduate from high school, they immediately have a job, and they go to work, because the college thing wasn't theirs, our technical school wasn't theirs.
Thank you. Commissioner Glenn? Commissioner Glenn. Okay. Commissioner Smith-Wright.
If selected, would you commit to running in a election?
Most definitely, and plan to run even if I'm not selected.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis.
Okay. Number 12 is Tyler Goad.
Come on down. Hello, sir. Please take two minutes to introduce yourself to the members of the public and the Board of Commissioners.
Oh, great, thank you. My name is Tyler Goad. I'm a 21-year Navy veteran. I just retired in 2019. I was an intelligence officer. I'm a graduate of the U.S. Naval Academy and a two-time graduate of the U.S. Naval War College. I've lived over nine years in foreign countries. I, after I retired, I continued to serve the community as a high school teacher at Davis County High School, as their senior naval science instructor of the Naval Junior ROTC program there. My wife of 16 years is also an educator. She works at Newton Parish Elementary as the technology teacher. We have two girls, aged 10 and 7. I am the son of Mike and Susan Goad, who moved here in 1993 after I graduated Madisonville North Hopkins High School. Sorry for not being in Owensboro for that. Both of my parents were heavily involved in this community and love this community like I do. They are an inspiration for me to serve. The particular strengths that I feel I bring here is a unique worldview. I am great at analyzing problems and coming up with unique solutions.
Thank you. Commissioner Castleton.
Yes, Mr. Goad. Would you please describe your involvement and/or experience in working with local community issues and organizations?
Okay. Just borrowing from my military background, I would, I would call myself less of a high-level leader in community involvement and more of a foot soldier. In my day-to-day experience as a high school teacher, I teach a program that is not a recruiting tool for the Navy, but it is a congressionally mandated and funded program for teaching citizenship. So along with leadership, naval history, physical education, performing arts, I teach citizenship. And that's the key role for me. I teach the basic civics, like how government works, what are the guiding documents for our, our democracy and stuff like that. But I go beyond that to citizenship. And one of the key beliefs that I instill in my students is involvement in, in community is a key aspect of a citizen. You don't just get to sit around and watch TV as a citizen. So under my leadership, we run food, clothing, and shelter supply drives multiple times throughout the year. And in just a single year, we provide thousands of hours of communities, community and volunteer service. You might say that I'm a link connecting many of the community services and agencies that you've heard about tonight through the commonality of community service with all of those students.
Thank you. Commissioner Glenn.
Based on your knowledge of Owensboro city government, what do you see as the top priorities for the city and for you as a member of the Board of Commissioners?
I think you've heard a lot of good answers tonight. You guys have a hard choice to make here with the quality of candidates that you're seeing. My, my answers aren't going to be all that new. But I would say an overall priority is to grow and make Owensboro a safe, a safe place that families want to work, live, and play. I don't think that's a hard thing to agree on. What that means, growing the population means attracting businesses. It means increasing the quality of education and the involvement of education with community and ensuring infrastructure is in place to back that up. One of the things I didn't mention in the previous question was that I'm on the airport board. That's, and that's a key reason why is because I, I feel like infrastructure is a key aspect of growing a, a community. And then increasing volunteerism. There's no shortage of great organizations serving this community, but many hands make the load lighter. So if we, if we can increase the amount of volunteers in this community, we can increase the level of benefits and services available to all of its citizens.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith-Wright.
If selected to fill the vacancy, will you commit to running in a special election to fill the remainder of the term?
I would love to spend more time with you people, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Sir.
Thank you for your service as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis.
Okay. Number 13, Curtis Maglinger.
Please take two minutes to introduce yourself to the members of the public and the Board of Commissioners.
Hello, I'm Curtis Maglinger. Been a resident for 46 years, worked for a local company Custom Audio Video for the past 30 years, and have been married to my lovely wife for 22 years. I personally want to thank you for your time, mayor and commission. Thank you for serving with my father, Larry Maglinger, for the past four years. He really respected and enjoyed each of you. Our mayor and commission accomplished many great things while he was serving as a commissioner. I would be honored to help fulfill my father's legacy of representing the city of Owensboro. Larry had such pride and passion in the city of Owensboro, and he has instilled that in me as well. I was fortunate to watch Larry since day one of his election, how he represented himself, how he listened, had an open door policy, ask questions, and understand and see what the citizen or situation needs. Most people come into this position like with a head full of steam, a list a mile long, and wanting to change everything the first week. However, I'm not that type. I am the type of leader that sets goals, gets their hands dirty, work side by side with others, watch, listen, and I feel that is the type of leadership that the whole community can get behind. I would like to continue Larry's vision path for the city of Owensboro. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Commissioner Castleton.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Maglinger, could you please describe your involvement and/or experience working with the local community's issues and organizations?
Yes, I was blessed to work for a company that let me really, or instilled us to go into the community and get involved. Been blessed to be in the Chamber of Young Professionals for many years, aged out. Greater, and then that gave me the opportunity to be part of the, the Chamber, Greater Chamber of Board of Directors. Been on some diverse groups of River Park Center, Science and History Museum, been a chair of that, seen a lot, a lot of budgets and trying to get funding and really learning how, how things work outside of the business. Been blessed to be part of the Red Cross of Western Kentucky. Currently on the Board of Dream Riders of Kentucky, helping special needs. It's, it's amazing, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Glenn.
So based on your knowledge of Owensboro city government, what do you see as the top priorities for the city and for you as a member of the Board of Commissioners?
Thank you. I echo a lot of the people behind us, continuing the safe community, you know, or keeping with our first responders, helping support local small businesses and economic development, responsible use of tax dollars as you, you have men, and continue a better community for our future leaders and generation. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith-Wright.
If selected to fill the vacancy, will you commit to running in a special election to fill the remainder of the term?
Yes, I would be honored.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis.
Okay. Number 14, Michael Johnson.
Good evening.
Sir, please take two minutes to introduce yourself to the members of the public and the Board of Commissioners.
Yes, good evening. I'm Michael Johnson. And first, I wanted to say my heart, my prayers go out to the Magalena family. And Larry Magalena, Commissioner Magalena was a great man, and his legacy will live on. I am here today to be able to talk to you about the position of commissioner. I'm married to my lovely wife, Christie, and together we have seven adult children and eight beautiful grandchildren. I'm all about family. My life has been service. I've retired out of United States Navy over 20 years, and when you're in the Navy, as a Navy chief, you hold many jobs. I have been a budget analyst, a team leader, a management supervisor, maintenance supervisor, food service management, training officer, records keeper, morale warfare and rec, a career counselor, certified in methods for managing quality, team skills and concepts, surface warfare specialist, aviation warfare specialist. I became an ordained minister while I was in active duty because I, I had the call and God called me to the ministry at that time. And I'm also a gospel singer, and that's something that me and Mr. Magalena had in common. He was a musician and an artist and singer, and so am I. So I really appreciate this opportunity to be here today and look forward to the questions.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Castleton.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Johnson, would you please describe your involvement and/or experience in working with the local community issues and organizations?
Thank you, Ms. Claston. My nonprofit as the president of Truth Outreach Incorporated, when I came back, I started the nonprofit to be able to fill the void that was in the city. I saw there were so many different needs of the homeless and low-income families, Truth Outreach Incorporated was born. And it was born because of the void that needed to be filled. I'm a person that moves with the speed of the need. Whatever the need is, we move at that speed. So we work with collaboration with all nonprofits in Owensboro. When they call, we answer. So that means if even the Patino Shelter, if they're needing food, we respond. If it's St. Benedict's, we respond. Even Crossroads, we've even worked with Salvation Army, with getting them food. During the pandemic, we became really critical to the needs of the city. And I believe I reached out even to the city leaders here many times to look for guidance. And you were great, you were tremendous during that time of really suffering for so many people. And but we work together, and that's the key. I'm a team leader, I like to lead, and I also like to work as, you know, a unit. So as we work together, I believe, you know, nonprofits are going to be more and more important because those are the resources that need to be in certain areas of Owensboro. And because of the nonprofits, we're doing a good job, and I appreciate all the hard work that the nonprofits do, and I'm glad to be a part of those nonprofits.
Thank you. Commissioner Glenn.
So based on your knowledge of Owensboro city government, what do you see as the top priorities for the city and for you as a member of the Board of Commissioners?
Thank you, Mr. Glenn, for that question. One of the priorities, I'm the person that doesn't reinvent the wheel, if that makes sense. We have the resources. The city's doing a great job with those resources, but I believe if we organize those resources to go into the areas, and as we're zoned in the city, different areas of the city, we can take those resources and take them to the places that are under-resourced. And that's what brings crime down. And when I say resources, I'm talking about healthcare in certain areas, and that's why we have, you know, community care clinics that do a good job. But when they're located in those communities that are under-resourced, you begin to see quality of life rise up, and quality of life is really important to me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Smith-Wright.
Mr. Johnson, if selected to fill the vacancy, will you commit to running in the special election to fill the remainder of the term?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis.
Okay. Number 15, Jim Glenn.
I want to tell you upfront, what I'm going to really tell you, some of you haven't heard before. I just want to let you know that upfront. Who do I talk to?
Mr. Glenn, please take two minutes to introduce yourself to the members of the public and the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. I did give a handout with my application. My name is Jim Glenn. I, my family's been here for the last 35 years, roughly. My family roughly picked up 10 college degrees. My kids told me not to talk about that. But we focus on education. I've traveled to five continents, and I basically traveled to make, to look at other parts of the world and see how they're doing it, look at other trends. I've been to every city in the United States, a million people or more. I've been to every city of a half a million people or more on the East Coast. I got one coming up this summer on the West Coast I have not been to, in California. I've been in education. I taught at the community college for 32 years. I taught at Brescia for five. My background, I taught in four different areas. I taught econ, finance, marketing, and business or management. And I was in industry. I managed $45 million in industry, graphics packaging. My background is printing. So the first 15 years I was married, I was married for 40 years. First 15 years I was married, I, I was a printer, basically. And I sold $45 million in printing from Erie, Pennsylvania, Omaha, Nebraska. After that, I went into education because of my father. And I had, I handled two-year and four-year colleges in three states, in Illinois, Indiana, and here in Kentucky. That's me. I'm Jim Glenn.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Castleton.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Glenn?
Yes, sir.
Would you please describe your involvement and/or experience in working with local community issues and organizations?
I've worked with a number of different organizations. Matter of fact, I have been a city commissioner. Mayor Watson, you and I won the city commissioner together in 2005.
Correct.
Along with the Charlie Castleton, Candace Brake, and Ron Payne. All of us, we were there for only one term only. We left the city with a $1.6 million surplus, hope that number's right. And all of us left and went and did something else. I became a state representative. I was a state rep for the 13th District for 12 years. And I chaired some committees as a state rep in Frankfurt. The question again was, I'm sorry, I don't want to be off point.
Describe, describe your involvement and experience in working with local community issues and organizations.
I've worked with, oh, great Scott. I've worked with the Nebula Center. I've worked with the NAACP. I am currently on a board that the governor appointed me to, the Kentucky Commission on Human Rights. And those, those three boards I am currently on today. And I, what I do is I think out five, 10, 15 years. That's how my thinking's been done. And I've been looking at problems that we may be confronted with. I went downtown this past weekend for the barbecue festival. I bought myself a sandwich, I got a Coke and potato chips, and I sat there and watched people. The newspaper said there'll be 35,000 people downtown. I talked to several of the people down there who were selling stuff. He says, not 35,000. When I was the city commissioner, the people at the International Barbecue Festival was 80,000. And I'm coming within my time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Glenn.
So based on your knowledge of Owensboro city government, what do you see as the top priorities for the city and for you as a member of the Board of Commissioners?
I wrote a list of about 10 priorities. I looked at this position as seven months. I said, what can I do in seven months? And here's what I came up with. I read an article last week in the Wall Street Journal. It said that the schools across the entire nation are behind by six months to a year in reading and math and social studies. That's not the key to that, that statement. The key is this. This community will lose, along with all the other communities across the country, will lose $70,000 per student. And we have 4,800 students. $70,000 lost in earnings over their lifetime. That is a third of a billion dollars for a community of only 60,000. That's a concern, guy. That's a concern I have. That's a concern, guys, that's a concern I have. How do you catch up? How do you fund the businesses in town? How do you have money to go to the restaurants and the ballgames if you don't have any currency? We have to figure out how to, how to correct that. And from my perspective, here's how to do it. I want to put a committee together on education. Talk to the high school, excuse me, I misspoke, talk to K through eight on how to hire reading teachers out of the local colleges, how to hire nurses out of the local colleges. Those are two things I think we can do in seven months. And what it will do, it will help us generate funding for our community going out 40 years. I have not heard one person talking here today speak anything about that. Everybody wants to say, I want to be on the board. I am not interested in that. I'm interested in the survival of this community.
Commissioner Smith-Wright?
Mr. Glenn, if you're selected...
I've already said, I am not interested, I'm only interested in the seven months. I'm 75 years old. I know it looks like I'm 19. That's a joke. I'm 75. We need to take a look at the next list of leaders in this community. Find somebody who's 45 or 50 to run for the commissioner position in January. I have no problem doing it right now. I already told you, I got two items, excuse me, one item I want to work on, split it into two, in two parts. Teachers who could teach teaching. I want to tell you what else it does. It will add job development in our community. Here's how you do it. I got one minute left. Here's how you do it. You offer scholarships to the people at Western, Murray, not a ton of them, but people you want to come here. When I came here, 30 years ago, the average age in our community was 33 years old. You know what the average age is now? The average man is 37, the average woman is 40. We've got to figure out how to cut those numbers, and we've got to start now. We go to the colleges, ask them, we'll pay for your scholarship, long as we give you a four-year scholarship, you come to this community and guarantee four years. Teach our kids how to read. Teach them how to count. We need that right now, not next week, now. We need to bring in the high school, bring in the elementary school teachers or elementary schools principals and ask them, how can we put this together? How can they help us put this together? And then we, we bring in teachers as we're going along to teach the students. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak to you. It's good seeing all of you.
Thank you, sir.
Take care of yourself.
Ms. Davis?
Number 16, Tyler Sagardoy.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much.
Please take two minutes to introduce yourself to the members of the public
Sure.
and the Board of Commissioners.
Absolutely. Well, my name's Tyler Sagardoy. I'm born and raised here in Owensboro. I lived on the west side growing up. I went to paddock swimming club, attended Tamarack Elementary School, Burns Middle School, and Apollo High School where I excelled in academic team and in writing. I went to college outside of Philadelphia, small school called Haverford College, which helped me learn how to think and gave me a broad perspective on the world. I lived up and around Philadelphia for about, well, since 2015, so about 2009 to 2015. I was involved in local politics there, local partisan politics. I attended grad school, got my MBA in 2013 while at Temple University. I was on the board of a 160-year-old Quaker school in Germantown, Pennsylvania. After I graduated grad school with my MBA in finance, I started working as a consultant in life sciences, finance, retail, and ultimately I ended up on working for a small boutique developer in Washington DC where I've been for the past six years. 2020 hit, and so did COVID, and my job became remote. So I had the opportunity of living in a basement flat or buying a house here in Owensboro where, you know, I miss the, the small-town feel. I mean, you live in Philadelphia, you live outside DC, you start to appreciate what Owensboro has to offer. And so I've been here for the past few years. I, you know, live with mom or mom, you know, mom's around, and so are the dogs, and that's, that's, that's who I am.
Thank you. Commissioner Castlin?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Sagardoy, please describe your involvement and/or experience in working with the local community issues and organizations?
Yeah, absolutely. So when I came back, COVID was in the middle of raging, and so I didn't really have an opportunity to get involved for about maybe the first six months or a year. Ultimately, I decided to jump into partisan politics. Last year, I ran for Davis County Commissioner from the Central District. And I was, you know, very aware of the Herculean task ahead of me, being somebody without a name recognition and my opponent being who he is, Commissioner Conder. And so I stepped up because I felt that in the time that there were issues that needed to be addressed, that there were things that needed to be said, especially around here where maybe some of those things aren't so popular or some of those things are not really understood. And so I stepped up and started a campaign that I'm immensely proud of. And even though I didn't succeed in attaining the seat, my campaign was a wild success. I got to know very many people in this community. I got to see myriad institutions and initiatives here in the town. I got to see real activism up close, and I got to be a part of some of the issues that were, that were topical as of last year and still remain topical today. And so even though I started off as somebody without name recognition in January, by the time the election was over, I think I had convinced a lot of people that my issues were serious, that they needed to be said, and we had a lot of success with that as well. Outside of that, I've been working with some members of the community to explore new media opportunities here in Davis County, so maybe you'll hear more on that later.
Thank you. Commissioner Glenn?
Yes. Based on your knowledge of Owensboro's city government, what do you see as the top priorities for the city and for you as a member of the Board of Commissioners?
Absolutely. So there's really a trifecta that I think a lot of people have talked about today, which is a stronger economy, infrastructure, and safety. So to speak about a stronger economy, I, I see a stronger economy as being founded by good jobs. A couple people have alluded to the affordability crises here in town. This was a very affordable place. It's still affordable, but not to many people who live in this community. There's a restaurant in town offering $12 an hour to work in 2013 when a house in Dugan Best is going to cost you at least six figures. So it's very, very difficult. We also are a part of the global economy. I think a lot of people forget that, and I don't think anybody here has brought that up, which means that we compete against everybody in the world, right? And so we are already at a, in some ways, a competitive disadvantage based on our location, based on the affordability of labor and global markets. I also think that one very latent existential threat here to our community is the rise of artificial intelligence. There are jobs here in this community, call center jobs, retail jobs, hospitality jobs, that will be made obsolete probably within five years. So how do we adjust? What do we do? It really comes down to, I think, figuring out what do we as a community, what industry do we want to attract here, right? We seem lost, right? We try all these different strategies, some, some succeed, some don't succeed, but it starts at figuring out who are the places and the industries we want to court. We want to court capital-intensive industries that have a community supporting background that when we bring them here, we're going to work to make sure that their operations succeed, so that way we can get better jobs for people who don't have a college degree here.
Thank you. Commissioner Glenn?
Yes. Based on your knowledge of Owensboro's city government, what do you see as the top priorities for the city and for you as a member of the Board of Commissioners?
I, we just answered that, but I'm happy to go on.
Okay, so we're on our last question, I'm guessing. Mayor, check it, check us on that.
I'm glad I'm not the only one. Beijal vu hier, okay?
Sorry. I thought we were done, but.
Yeah.
I think we're on the last one.
Okay. Commissioner Smith-Wright?
Okay. If you're selected to fill the vacancy, will you commit to running in the special election to fill the remainder of the term?
Yes, absolutely. I have plenty of campaign infrastructure from last year, and so, you know, I'm, I'm looking forward to the opportunity. To take advantage of the next minute and 50 seconds, I just want to continue what I was talking to Commissioner Glenn about. When it comes to infrastructure in particular, I am very adamant about showing the taxpayers what they get for their money. So I'm very much so about good roads, good sidewalks, good parking lots. I also want to see infrastructure work on peripheral areas in the community. Drainage is a big problem, especially for some of these new communities, so flooding is a very regular occurrence. Childcare, the American Rescue Plan Act money is going to run out in September 2024, which offers a big hole for childcare everywhere in the country, especially here in Kentucky where there's going to be a $1 billion deficit. It's very important for us to understand the severity of the problem, especially because there are labor problems and labor shortages in various industries around here. People can't go to work when they have to sit home and take care of their kid. It's important that we address that. We have a study for that. The senior center. One of my very big issues last year was making sure we do the senior center correct and we get it right. We get buy-in from the seniors, which I think was the missing component to, to last year's effort. And so I think it's very important that we, we wrangle them in and we actually get the center built. In addition, neighborhood amenities, pools, activities, parks, it would be good to have the Neighborhood Alliance be the vehicle for spearheading those efforts. And then finally, when it comes to safety, two of the issues I think that are very important. One, we talk about gun safety. I think it's very important to recognize that most of the guns on the, on the street are coming from unlocked cars, unlocked houses, and so education on that would be, would be very good. And then finally, with safety, we got to work about keeping fentanyl and drugs like that out of our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
Number 17, Reggie Helm.
Thanks, guys. I'm going to make your job a whole lot easier.
Sir, please take two minutes to introduce yourself to the members of the public and the Board of Commissioners.
Hi, I'm Reggie Helm. I'm a borough boy, and I thought really hard about this vacancy this weekend. And, you know, a good leader sacrifices for the betterment of the cause. And I think this vacancy should best go to a, a young leader, a leader that creates unity in the community, who understands diversity and supports the arts and economic development and is an advocate for good health. I think that person needs to let their, that have, let their actions speak louder than their words, and the person that I'm talking about thinks of terms of we and not me. You know, for three terms on my board of my alliance, we never had a quorum, we never did anything. And the whole time I'm sitting there, I'm watching the Northwest Alliance kicking butt and taking names. And I thought, that's the way it should be. And I told my wife, I said, that's the way I want to do our alliance. And so when I became chair, I went around and got nine people, and every one of them said this. If I serve, I wanted to be active like the Northwest Alliance. So when you've got someone that can motivate and inspire people to take action because of their actions, that's true leadership. And I think we should harness that energy. I think we should help develop that leadership skill. And the best thing, I think, to pay homage to Commissioner Maglinger is to support that future leader. And I think that I'm going to step down because I'm going to support Rafe Buckner. I truly believe in his leadership skills, and I think he'll be a future mayor of this town. And when he becomes mayor, I would like for him to make me ambassador to Curdville. So thank you.
No follow-up questions on that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helm.
All right. Ms. Davis?
Okay, number 18, Thomas Trust.
Good evening, sir. Please take two minutes to introduce yourself to the members of the public and the Board of Commissioners.
Well, my name's Tom Trust. Unlike everybody else I've heard here tonight, I'm not from Owensboro. I've moved here about a year and a half ago, from Davis County, but I've lived in 12 states, 17 homes, and a couple of countries. Was in the Air Force for six years, and I worked for Louisville Gas and Electric Kentucky Utilities, I retired from there. I was the director of the Green River Power Station down in Central City for the last 20 years. My wife and I have been, like I said, all over the country. I'm married to the most patient person there is. We've been married 42 years, and she's put up with all these moves and all these things that we've had to do. Here in the, here in the city, I've been singing in the Owensboro Technical Community College Choir. We've been doing that for four or five years through the Messiah in the wintertime and the spring concert we do here in the, in the summer. That's about me.
Thank you. Commissioner Castlin?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Trust, would you please describe your involvement and/or experience in working with the local community issues and organizations?
Through the Louisville Gas and Electric, we, we've, I worked in the development and construction of power plants all over the country to get a power plant off the ground. Had to work with every town board and, and state regulators, so I've got a lot of experience working with those folks. When I was first out of the Air Force, for one reason or another, I decided I was going to write some community block grant applications, found out that I was good at it, wrote five for five different towns, all five were accepted, and we, I got to see them kick off, and then I moved on to my next town.
Commissioner Glenn?
So based on your knowledge of Owensboro's city government, what do you see as the top priorities for the city and for you as a possible member of the Board of Commissioners?
I would say top priority is what the people of Owensboro want, what they, what they're interested in. Right after that would be the employees of the city. I've heard a lot about the first responders, and I support them 100%. One thing I haven't heard, and one of the things that drew me to decide to retire here as opposed to anywhere else in the country, is our utility department. Because I'm from the utility, that's near and dear to me, and, you know, people don't realize that if you come from a different part of the country, what reliable, inexpensive power means to the development of a city, to, to all the people in the city. That'd be a, a concentration point for me, for sure.
Thank you. Commissioner Glenn? Commissioner Smith-Wright? Commissioner Smith-Wright, sorry.
If you're selected to fill the vacancy, would you run in the special election?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Well, I want to thank everyone for coming, and at this time, I'm going to make a motion to enter into closed session. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. We're going to go into closed session under KRS 61.810, parentheses one, closed parentheses, open parentheses F, closed parentheses to, uh, hold discussions on what might lead to the appointment. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose, most who cares. We will not be taking any action following the closed session. Thank you all. Be safe.
Thank you all very much for coming.
Thank you all.